So good morning again, we're back again for The Chosen. Today we'll do the second episode of the first season. So I just wanted to, we'll do a little bit of explanation before we start, then we'll show the video. People at home can watch that themselves, we don't want to air that and violate copyright law. So that if, we've got a couple of new people here today. Have you seen The Chosen before? Have you, so this is all new to you? You've not seen any of it, okay. All right. And Mary's here as well, okay. All right. So just want to be able to give you, because one of the things that people said to me was, they would really appreciate if people had name tags, which of course they don't in the movie. So we want to be able to just give you a little bit of reference. And so this is a shot from this particular day's series. And so two of these characters, these are two characters that we met last week, all right? So if you didn't see it, you need to be, to know that there's a familiarity that's expected. Okay, so the woman is Mary, who was originally called Lilith, which was her, her name, her professional name. And then at the end, at the end of the, the, the last week's episode, we understand that she is actually called Mary, and she's from Magdala. And so at the end, the, the closing scene of last week's episode is that the Lord calls her by name, touches her, and she has this amazing experience of being written. So that she is, as the scriptures would tell us, she is exorcised of several demons. So we're going to pick up with Lily again, uh, Mary, excuse me. The man on the right is Nicodemus. He's also a figure from the scriptures, he's a member of the Sanhedrin. So we know by the way that he is dressed, that he is a man learned in the law, who is an influential and powerful person in Jerusalem. He's now in Capernaum, this episode, these episodes take place in Capernaum. And so he has gone there to meet with the rabbi and the local community, and to be able to encourage them in their, in the, in the practice of their faith. So those are two of the characters we've already met, both Mary and Nicodemus. And then the other one that we met last week, which is a, a very interesting person, is Matthew. Matthew is a tax collector. He has quite clearly OCD issues. He's very, very wealthy. Extremely wealthy, thank you. Excessively wealthy in so many ways. And so, and that comes through in the ways that they portray him. So we're going to continue to see Matthew through the series as we go forward. So I'm not going to give you any more than that, you'll get to appreciate his character, and he does a great job of it. The other person that is a little bit different than what you expect, because he looks like everybody else for the most part, this is the Lord Jesus. Okay, so played by Jonathan, Romeo, Romeo, okay? Jonathan's father is an Egyptian Coptic Christian, and his mother is from... He's a Christian. So he's a, he's a great job. But unlike a lot of the things that we've seen in other presentations, the novels, it's very human, Christ. And when you, if you don't know who he is, he's just one more face in the crowd, you know, as it probably was when the Lord was, was doing that work. The other one we met last week is the villain, the Romans' procurer, Quintus. And so Quintus, as well, he's got a little arrangement that he made with Simon about his taxes. And so we'll, we'll see that coming up again in this particular episode. And then, just the last one I'm going to end with, because they made a big deal of this in their, in their streaming, is that this is the image at the end of the last episode. So this is where we ended at the last episode. So Mary is in the bar. She has obviously tried to attempt suicide, and is led back to the bar by a, a bird. She comes in and she wants to be able to have this potent drink, and when she reaches for the drink, a hand is placed on hers, and he follows her out, and then this is the embrace after her exorcism. So that's, so that's where we are. All right, so we know where we are, we're, we're good with all of that? So what we're going to do is we're going to pick up in this particular series with, after the exorcism of Mary of Magdala, and we're going to see what, what happens, and it's going to take us into something that is, this episode is, is really very specifically Jewish. What is, think about what would be one of the most Jewish things you could think of that Jewish people do that most of the other, the rest of the world does not? And this episode is about that because they are the chosen. All right? That's, I'm going to the back to get coffee. I don't take my notes though. We all sat there? Oh, you're, we done?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right, very good. So the title of this particular episode is Shabbat, or what we would say in English as Sabbath. And so if you remember that, I asked you before we started, what is that, that is most quintessentially Jewish? And that of course is, in, in many understandings, Shabbat or Sabbath. It is the opening part of the Bible. In the book of Genesis, we read that God created the world in six days, and then he rested on the seventh, which is where the whole understanding of Sabbath comes from. And what's so remarkable about that is that it identifies for us that it is revealed by God. Because you have to recognize that we take the idea of a seven-day week for granted, that it starts on Sunday and it ends on Saturday or Sabbath. And so, but we don't stop to realize that that concept of time, that measurement of time, excuse me, is, comes to us even in our modern world from the Bible. Everything else comes from nature. That a day would have 24 hours is how long it takes the earth to spin on its axis. That a month would last as it does comes from the faces of the moon, which is where even the English word month comes from, that's not exact. But even our idea of a year, and that every fourth year we would have a leap day, is because of how long it takes the, the earth to completely make its orbit around the sun. So when we think of the measure, the ways that we measure time, we have to recognize that the one thing that doesn't come from nature is the idea of a seven-day week. It actually comes from the Bible. And in contrast to that, to realize that the Romans, because the Romans had their own concept of things, and so they actually invented a 10-day week, because they did everything in tens. And so they had a 10-day week, and it didn't work. People were exhausted, people were overwhelmed. So the reality of Sabbath is really genuinely, it's a religious understanding. So I always think that if people don't believe in God, and they don't want to worship in church, then I don't think they should get the day off, because it's a religious observance. It's not anything that is in human, in, in nature. It's something that God revealed to us as part of our nature. Why? Because he knows, he created us. And so, in the very opening segment there, when the little boy is there, and the, the mother's explaining to him, do you remember, she said, "There are three things that they observe Sabbath for." Now, as, as somebody asked earlier, to realize Sabbath for the Jewish people happens every week. And so, as a result of that, then this, this is just another Sabbath during their week. It's not a special festival. But it gives you the understanding, when the Lord is crucified on Good Friday, their concern about the bodies being left on the cross, the need to be buried, because that holy day was a Sabbath. So you realize, and she said to her, she says to Mary, "You better get going home now, because you've got a lot of work to do. Sweep the house first, and start the fire, because there are lots of preparations." And all of the preparations had to be done before the sun set. And the recognition of Sabbath was, what was the thing they used to determine that the Sabbath had begun?
Sundown?
No, not, yeah, but, nope. What did they use? Usually there was a child. In fact, in the very opening episode, he says, "I see it, it's there." The first star. When this, because it's not just sundown, when the sky is dark enough that you can see a star, then the sun has truly set. It's not just that it sets beyond the horizon, but it's that the darkness has overtaken everything so that you see the first star. Okay, so that's, that's the clue to it, into understanding that. So, and then to understand that by the Sabbath then, the, the, the particular of that is that no, no work can be done. And so, one of the times that I went to the Holy Land, we actually stayed, we didn't go with the group that I use now. I went with a different group. We'll go back to them again, but that's a good story. But we stayed, we stayed in a Jewish hotel up on the Sea of Galilee, in Tiberias. And when we got, we, we were, we were down having breakfast, and people were coming in so frustrated, because what was happening almost, they would get out to the elevator, and it would stop at every floor. It would stop at every floor going down, it stopped at every floor going up. Can you imagine how frustrating that is when you're in a 26-story elevator? So as a result, we didn't get out in time that morning. But the reason for that was because it was the Sabbath. And so, for a, an observant Jew to press the button on an elevator is considered work. So they can't press, they won't press the elevator. So the elevator has to be programmed that on every Sabbath, so from sunset to sunset, you can press all the buttons you want, it's going to stop at every place on the way.
They're lining the elevator.
And when you were getting down for your meal, that everything was already pre-prepared. So there was no really hot meal on Sabbath morning, you didn't even get caught. Because everything, you couldn't light a fire. So that's why they light the candle before the sun sets. They have to light the candle before you see the star, because that's the work. Lighting a candle is work. Anything, so that's why in, in previous times, they built their houses, or they, they, they lived in houses around the synagogue. Why? Because they had to walk. You weren't allowed to do any work, you couldn't put a saddle on a horse, you couldn't turn an ignition in a car. You had to be able to walk to get to synagogue and back. So that's how they developed around that, and then they got encased and fenced in. And we came from their word, the Jewish word, the Yiddish word, of ghetto. They became ghettos. And in the early 20th century, they impoverished them, in that, or oppressed them because of that. And then of course, it was easy during, in, in Eastern Europe, where they had settled during the Nazis and the Holocaust. They were easy to find and easy to exterminate, which was also how then a lot of powerful, important, and, and, important Christian people were able to smuggle them, because they all lived in the same place. And they needed outside people to come in. And so they, there are wonderful stories, I mean, Shabbos lists as a great example of that. But there are other stories about one woman who would smuggle children in her suitcases through the ghetto. She saved, I think it's like, oh, well, a couple thousand children. Every day, she would smuggle two or three children. And they would, she had something that she would do to, I think she had a cat or a dog that she brought with her, so that the dog would distract them, they couldn't hear the children whimpering, because the, the dog was making noise or something. They were very imaginative in order to, I'm sorry if I'm a wrong rabbit. Come back to Shabbat. So she says to him, "There are three things that we honor with every Sabbath. We honor our family, we honor our, our people, and we honor God." And so we have to realize that Sabbath is a family celebration. And so, see what you, sometimes you, okay, yeah. But as you play through the images of the, of the episode, you realize that when you get to the end, there are four Shabbats. There are four different dinners that are the celebration of the Sabbath, and we'll get to that. But they're all in some way a sense of family, or of their heritage as a people. And so of course, that's what the little boy wants to know. "When you were there, did you still do this?" "Yes, we still observed the Sabbath, and every week, every week, uh-huh, every week." Every religion and, and time. So the, but the importance of recognizing that, that it connected them through their history and through these ritual observances to their history as a people, and again, to that which, that for their understanding, which we sometimes gloss over, it's God's gift. And we sometimes, even in our modern time, we think of it as a burden. Then we go back to when we were all younger. And Jonathan's probably the only one that can't remember this, because he's that young. But when, you didn't have sports on Sunday. When stores weren't open on Sunday. When school activities didn't take place on Sunday. Sunday was a day that our culture valued for God and for him. So you couldn't buy liquor, no, you couldn't, and if you ran out of bread and milk, you were really out of luck. Although I grew up in Clinton, so when we got really stuck, you'd go over the line to Lancaster where the Seventh Day Adventist trip. Their markets were open on Sunday, but you couldn't get anything on Saturday. And even today, you can't get any liquor in that tent. Yeah, it's a dry tent. So, so that, so we real, we, we've lost what, what, what Sabbath, what this episode is celebrating is really what we have lost as a people, and what we have lost as a culture. Now how are we ever going to be able to get that back? Because we have a whole generation now who doesn't have that understanding. And I, you know, I mean, those of you who are Italian, remember that more than anything, you know? You spent your whole Sunday at Nana Enon's, you know? And you would starve, and you would eat all afternoon, right?
Every, every Sunday, my father, my family, big family of eight children, all my cousins, all my aunts and uncles came to our house. Because my father was the patriarch, so it was weird. And that's all my mother did on Saturday, every, every day, eat her. Breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
And the sauce is on.
It's all we do.
Breathe.
Breathe.
Now breathe.
All right, just silence it.
Just put it down the volume.
Turn it off.
Go, turn it to silent. Do you know how to make it go silent?
On the side, right?
So see, so, so to realize that that's, we carry, so that's, so to stop to think about it, it's been part of our culture all the way until the mid to the latter part of the 20th century. Not simply as a Jewish people, but to, to people of religion, and to a larger group of society. But we have moved forward, and unfortunately, we are so production organized or, or, or based. It's all about being productive, and making money and making use of things, and that we've, we've lost the side of that. And so we don't rest either. We, you know, even with, with these crazy inventions, even people, I mean, if you go to the beach, you see people with their, their, their devices on the beach. And people will tell you, they're doing email, they're doing phone, I mean, it's annoying, you're sitting there and you hear somebody's conversation. I don't want to be at the beach and hear that conversation. You know, we don't disconnect at all. So we've, we've really come to the point where what we see in Sabbath, we've lost on the whole level of our culture. And so we're spinning out of control. Again?
But aren't the Jews, I mean, the Hasidic Jews, I mean, the Orthodox Jews, will they still follow that?
They do, they follow all those rules. That's why even today, in certain parts of Israel, you, you know, they, because they don't want to alienate that group of people, you get only a cold breakfast. You get, you know, if you're in a Jewish hotel, the elevator stops at every floor.
But even here in the States, I mean, they still observe.
They would still observe back here, but then, and if you go to those parts of, of, if you go even in, in Jerusalem, the, the Hasidic parks of the city, they actually have these huge stone, excuse me, steel gates. They're corrugated metal, that they will, they will pull in and block the street. They will not let you drive through their streets, because they, that's their observance. You cannot drive on their streets, whether you're Jewish or not, because that's offensive to them and to their observance of the Sabbath. Okay, so, yes, and there are parts, I mean, sure that's in parts of New York, that again, they, they tend to congregate in a, in a, in a common area, because on Sabbath, they can't do any work. So, and as anything, it's always easier when everybody that's around you follows the same rules. If you're trying to be a Hasidic Jew in a Western Christian culture, your kids are going to go, "Well, how come I can't go out and play and they can? I want to play ball today, what's the problem?" You know, so it's easier when everybody else around you follows the same rules for your kids to just fall into line, and then that's what they grow up and learn.
And that's happening in the religious Sabbath, where they, the parents don't want them to miss a game, because on Sunday, they'll choose to miss mass instead of following to the church.
No, that's too bad with the Catholics, you know, we're not as, you know, as strict.
But what I'm saying is, I know, but now, right now, we're not as strict.
Well, that's a problem, you're saying, we're not going to get that. They don't understand how important it is. Their argument is, well, they'll be so disappointed if they miss their game. It's, you know, they can't put missing mass as a sport.
Sports is the new religion.
Yeah.
And shopping malls are into temples. I mean, you think about, when you go to, we go to Europe to admire the magnificent baselicas and the churches they have. And they were houses of art, they were the investment of what was the, the, the element of pride. They were where people congregated and visited. And before, there were telephones or newspapers where people learned the social news of their community. We, we do that now in the market. Our, our marketplace, our shopping malls are temples. And we've made our churches living rooms. So when you think about it, I mean, people say, you know, that, well, when you go to a lot of churches, what, what do you find? Cushions on the pews, carpets in the aisles. You know, you find everything stripped of just basic things. And where do you see artwork that is invested and made of quality materials like steel and glass, water fountains? I mean, you think about, you know, and if it's not, maybe I should update myself, it's no longer the shopping mall, it's the casino. That's the modern temple. That's the temple of the 21st century. The Encore Casino, which is down in, in Boston, okay? They, they have Murano glass. If any of you are familiar with Venice, the Venetian Murano glass, they shut their factories for one year to blow the glass for the chandeliers in the Encore Casino. They're done in red glass, because they knew that that would be particularly considered lucky to many of the Asian gamblers. And into the glass, they blew gold dust, actual gold flecks. Each, somebody who worked for the state explained to me that each chandelier cost $100,000. I said, "Well, how many are there?" "How many are there?" And they said, "Oh, there are a hundred of them?" "It's a million dollars." In the middle of it is this sculpture that they paid $7 million for. And with that, then there's also this carousel of America round that they decorate with living flowers, and then they treat the flowers, so they change the flowers four times a year. What does that cost? And they can still make a profit. So you realize that, that, those are the modern temples. That's where we really, you think about, what did it cost to build Gillette Stadium? We can't get $1 million to renovate our church, but you can get people to spend $200 for one seat in a snowstorm, and tell you that they don't mind to go and sit in a snowstorm for six hours. But they can't spend one hour in church because it's boring. So that tells you where our culture has shifted, and what is it that really matters? And of course, we all know the high holy day of America, of course, is Super Bowl Sunday. You don't schedule anything for Super Bowl Sunday, nobody's going to come. And the, 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 the holy day right behind it is Halloween. Don't do anything on Halloween, because someone's going to come. Yeah, you're either out partying or trick-or-treating, or they cut their lights and they're hiding at home. But, so, I, I mean, you've traveled from Shabbat. See, this is what I do, I put down all these rabbit.
I mean, I have a question, you'll go on it. Matthew's family? He doesn't belong to his family, he's attacked for it.
Yeah, let me get to that, we'll get to that, I just want, before we get to that. So, I, yes, I will come to that, all right? I'll, I'll, I will get, get to that point as well. So I just wanted to draw, because it, it was part, if you were here this weekend and you heard my homily, it happened at the very beginning. Do you notice when, when the scribe, who's all dressed in those, those robes, comes into the marketplace? And he's walking through the marketplace, did you see what happened? They, they step, they stepped back, they bowed their head, and they nodded to him. So that's what Jesus was talking about in the Gospel. The scribes, they love, you know, the acknowledgement and the, and the signs of respect and honor in the marketplace. And so there was Sunday's Gospel acting out for us, right in front of us. And even then, at the end, when Nicodemus explains that he is a Pharisee from Jerusalem, what does Mary do? She puts a nail on him, "Oh, I'm in trouble." You know, and what does he say? "No, no, no, I'm not here to enforce the observance of the law." So at the beginning, in the end, it reinforces for us what was the attitude and the perception and the understanding of people about religious authority, which I'll come back to when we talk about what Nicodemus says at his Shabbat.
Which was your, your Sunday homily?
Right. So, and then, then, of course, we flip into, but Matthew comes in with Gaius, who says, "I'll wait outside." And, and you notice that as they walked by Matthew, what did the soldiers do? They purposefully bumped into him. And no matter how he moved, they purposefully bumped into him, and in fact, they called him a dog, which is as diminutive as it could be. And then Gaius says, "I, I don't want to die, you know? I don't want to drag your dead body out, I'll wait outside for your replacement." And then of course, Quintus comes in, and, "Well, if you're his escort, stay." You can see Gaius like, "Oh, I'm going to get out." And but, and then, when the guy pulls his sword, what does Gaius do? He kneels, because he knows that if he's in the way, his head's gone. So he, he, he kneels at that point, and, and Matthew is, it's just so wonderful, his personality. He has no filter. And he, and he's, the other thing about him is he's literal.
But he really liked that.
That's, that's the character that they're creating. And I think part of what, what Dallas wants to do is he wants to make these people like us. And he wants to make them human in some aspect. Is that really what Matthew was? We don't know. He's taking that kind of from the aspect of his own gospel and the way he writes. Matthew's very literal, you know? You know, because when Gaius says to him, well, do you know who Quintus is? Well, yes, he's the procurator of the Sari, which is, it's like, really? And then he asks him another question, and, and Matthew goes, alright, alright, alright. And, and, and Quintus doesn't want anything. No, keep, move on, move on, move on, cut to the chase, well, tell me what you're here for. I'm here because of Simon, and I think he's disreputable. And now suddenly Quintus is intrigued by who Matthew is. And so the, the interesting point that I think is, is a clue to where the character of Matthew is going to go. And those of you who have seen the rest of the episodes know, Quintus says to him, I may have use of your keen powers of observation. And so Matthew is very keen in his observation. It's gonna frustrate the dickens out of the other apostles. But it's also, it, it's a reminder that what is frustrating to others, the Lord has chosen him as Quintus did for this particular gift, and we benefit because we read his Gospel.
I don't understand why the soldiers don't like Matthew, because doesn't Matthew work for the soldiers?
But he's a Jew. He's a Jew.
But he's collecting taxes for, for, right?
Yeah, but the soldiers don't care, they don't, they, they don't get that money. The money goes to Rome to build the Colosseum and the Piantheon and all of the, the Roman forum, they don't see that. So, and that's also part of, remember when they have the, 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 um, the scuffle in the marketplace? And Marcus is trying to pull them apart, and Gaius steps over, clunks him on the head. You know, he says, there's only one language that, that keeps the peace, learn to speak it. And of course, the language is physical force. Finally, so that's, and the Romans were masters of it, among the cruelest of people. Just give me why they ruled for so long. Alright? And so then it, it, a couple of other things that just were really great in the, in the episode is, um, when Andrew and Simon are having their, um, discussion in the bar. Simon's buying, um, uh, drinks for everybody, and of course Andrew sees him, he says, you're fattening the calf before it's born. You know, he's pumping them because he's gonna find out where they're going and what they're doing so that he can be able to betray them. Um, and turn them into the Romans so that his debt will be absolved. Because he doesn't know that, that Matthew has already turned him into Quintus, so he's already in trouble. But he doesn't know that, he's just reveling in what he thinks is his upper hand, and Andrew's quite annoyed. You know, and, and Simon says to him, what's the matter, brother? Well, get that smile off your face, you know? You're having, you're enjoying this, well, I can't have, enjoy my freedom? Yeah, well, you're not free yet. So, and, um, so that's when Andrew says to him, we've made our choices too. And Simon responds, well, do you really think this is a choice? And then Andrew gets up and leaves. So again, that's taking us back to that sense that this is Peter's struggle that we're gonna see over the next couple of episodes. Is that he feels that he has no freedom in what is happening, because these are not choices, this is the oppression of Rome. And this is the fact that he's going to lose his house, gonna lose his boat, will probably lose his family, and as he says, as Andrew says, they might even lose their lives. So, and his point is, this is not a choice, this is the oppression of, um, of Rome. And of course, Peter's gonna, Simon's gonna question in another point, then, where is the favor of God? How can we be chosen if these bad things are happening to us? So it's really coming at the title from the other side of the story. If we know all of this misfortune, if we know this difficulty and these challenges and these uncertainties, how can we be the chosen people? Where is God that he's not taking care of us? That instead we are poor and suffering and in need, that Simon feels the need to betray his own people. Of course, that's again, remember, what is Shabbat about? It's about family, our people, and God. So we keep coming back to those three things through the course of, um, the, uh, of, of the, of the episode. And, and then I wrote down, um, at some point in the conversation between Nicodemus and Mary in the marketplace, the references made with sharing loaves with God himself about Sabbath. And, um, it just struck me, a wonderful line about really what Eucharist is. Eucharist is every Sunday, our Shabbat is about sharing loaves with God himself. And of course, what we've lost, even in our understanding of Jewish faith with the destruction of the temple, is that part of their Sabbath was the, the, the challah, the challah bread, but the show bread that was in the temple that the priests would eat in the temple every Sabbath. And with the destruction of the temple, that doesn't happen. But of course, that practice taken from the Exodus through the desert into the temple in Jerusalem is really the foundation for our Catholic understanding of Eucharist and what the Lord takes and consecrates in, in memory of Him, um, at the Last Supper. And so, um, Mary then tells Nicodemus that she doesn't know his name, because Nicodemus thinks he's the miracle man. I didn't think it worked, but I, I did a miracle. Who were you? Well, you don't remember me? No, I don't, anyway. And then when she says, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, and then, well, what's his name? I don't know. What do you mean, you don't know? Now, of course, we'll see how he will eventually come to know, this is setting up for the next couple of episodes as well. But, um, and so the, 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 the truth is, Mary knows him, and she says, I will know him all my life. She doesn't even know his name. And I think that's an important thing, you have to realize that, um, part of what it's, it's emphasizing is that if we are chosen, then it isn't about the encounter with Christ, even if we don't know his name. If we come to the presence of the, of the living God, and that touches us, we are forever changed, as Mary was. And even if we don't know his name, we can't, we should not forget him. And, and that, I think, is, is the next level about, um, how we are able to do that. And so then, the, the, the story shifts into the Sabbath, the Shabbat dinner. And so we see the people preparing, and of course, the, the setup for that with Matthew is, obviously, somebody has been displeased with him, and Gaius comes in and tells him to go home. And he says, no, I can't go home, I have a job to do. And he says, you know, my father taught me that I have a job to do, and I need to do that. And then they have this conversation, he says, well, my father has to son me. I don't understand, how, how can you, he says, my father says he doesn't have a son. Why? Because he has betrayed him. Yeah, because he's a tax collector, he takes people, he takes the money from Jewish people at an excessive rate in order to be able to live a very fine lifestyle. Remember, his fancy gold door and all the sandals with gold on them, and all his very fine tunics, you know, he's got all the keys to keep everything under lock and key. So Matthew lives a very extravagant life, a very lavish lifestyle, but he's also living all alone. You know, because nobody wants him, and so he's really, at the end, is the dog. Right, so, so he's, he's moved at that point to be able to, it, it stirs his consciousness and his memory of his family. And so he comes to share Shabbat with his family. But when he gets there and he looks in, he still can't do it. He, he, he's still the, 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 the hurt of that rejection and the, the denial of, of who he is, is so very real and strong. And, and we can also start to say, but it also happens in our world today.
Yeah.
There are people who, there are people who will deny their family because they become Catholic, or because they belong to a different religion, or because they in some way identify in some aspect that is offensive to their family, whether that's gay or lesbian or whatever that might be. There are people who deny their family connection because of something that the person feels is part of their identity or their, or their personhood. So it, it, it may seem strange to us because of our sense of family, but what Matthew experiences, again, I think it's part of the way they're trying to make them realize they, these are people just like us, their circumstances may be different, but the situations are still the same. You have people who are obsessive compulsive, people who are greedy, people who are unhappy, people who are lonely, people who are shunned and, and ostracized by their family. And we're gonna see all kinds of people coming forward in the episodes because we're all chosen. So then we move then to the Shabbat dinner, and so it's interesting the way they overlay each of the gatherings. And so of course you see that, um, the first one that we're brought into is where Nicodemus is. And I don't, it's very subtle because there's other conversation going on, but they're talking to her, to his wife, about all of the fancy things they have. Their silver and the, the, the china and the linens and all of the things that are there. And of course, everybody's dressed in their very fine and elegant religious robes. And as you notice, they've got servants dressed in a very plain tunic who are serving at the table, bringing the food in and out, and you may have noticed again, the servants are all men. The women are doing the cooking, the men are doing the serving, because the women aren't allowed in the main room where the men are. For the religious observance, it's very distinct, that's one of, Shabbat is one of those few times where men and women interact as family around the table, but this is a very formal one. In fact, when they knock on the door and, um, Nicodemus opens the, the door, he's greeted by the local rabbi who says, did you hear, because it was hard to hear, it took me a while to, I had to go back to figure out what it was. Do you know what he said? He, he rankled to Nicodemus, he got really angry at him. Teacher of teachers, you make us whole by your presence. Only God makes us whole.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So, and, and it's that underplay again, and then Nicodemus, as he's getting ready, says to his wife, um, when they're looking at the, the Hesemonian, um, tapestry, and he's commenting, you know, this is Hesemonian. And she says, eh, okay, you know, tell me it's Victorian or Elizabethan or, you know, um, whatever, I don't know. So what's the big deal that it's Hesemonian? So he says, well, we, when the Greeks took over, we were oppressed. They didn't allow us to observe Shabbat, we weren't allowed to do our practices. And then the Maccabees revolted, which of course is the foundation for, um, Hanukkah in December. And our worship was able to return. And he says, now, who is suppressing our religious worship now? Now, of course, the obvious answer might be, well, it's the Romans, because they occupy the land. But they're gathering for Shabbat. So the, the reference is, it's to help us, something said, Nicodemus is already struggling in his role as the teacher of teachers. He says, I'm afraid that I know who it is. Meaning that they are far more concerned about the, the perfunctory rituals of Shabbat than really recognizing what it is about. They're more concerned about doing everything right and impressing each other by the quality of their materials or the, the, the perfection of their ritual observance, that they're not really entering, as the Lord would show us in the Gospels, into the spirit of Shabbat, which is to honor family and God and the history as a people. It's about recognizing that God wants us to rest, but to rest in His presence. And to realize Shabbat is not simply about giving glory to God and about observing the laws, it's about taking a rest to know that we are loved and we are redeemed and we are precious. And the Lord says, chill for a day, and just enjoy the fact, I have made you and I love you. We can't do that in our modern time, we just can't, we can't disconnect. We've gotta be productive, we've gotta have something to, to be effective. And so Nicodemus is struggling, that he recognizes to a certain point, it's all very hollow. It looks really pretty, and it's very elegant, but he's recognizing it's hollow. It doesn't get to the very heart of what it is about Shabbat and what's been happening. Then of course we flip to, to, to Matthew, who comes to his parents' house and he looks in the window and they're setting the table, and he just can't even knock on the door. So he decides he's gonna leave, he takes his dish with him, and then of course he has told, promised the dog, and if there was any left at the end, he'd share, so of course the great picture is that he, he and the dog are having Shabbat together. That's his family. If we want to look at family and God and history, that's really Matthew's family so far uh, in what we've come to be able to know and to see. So even as imperfect and sad as his Shabbat is, it really is on a level, the truth of it. And then of course we go to Mary's Shabbat, and she confuses it with Passover, she sets an extra seat for Elijah. Because, of course, in Passover you set the seat for Elijah because he's going to come to prepare the way for the Messiah. And of course, the great, um, irony of that is that Mary unknowingly has prepared seats at her Shabbat for Elijah. And so there's a knock on the door, and who comes to take the seat? The Messiah! You know, and there's the knock on the door, and it's wonderful the way they present it. Because again, it's part of the way, I think, we have, it, it comes from the book of Revelation. You know, the Lord says, see, I stand at the door and I knock. Alright, so he knocks at the door, and they all look at each other, Mary thinks, well, everybody I've invited is here, you know, okay. So she opens the door and there he is. It's you, it's you, okay, it's good to see you again, Mary. And she doesn't know what to say, um, I don't want to be rude, but, um, oh, yeah, yeah, please, of course, come in, come in, come in, come in. Right, and then, and then you, you are, you realize what we hear in the Gospels, who's there? All the undesirables. You have Shulah who is blind, in case you didn't notice, who can read better than Barnaby. Barnaby, who's his own kind of curmudgeon and, and undesirable, and then you have Nathaniel and, um, is it James? Nathaniel and James, Jude, Jude, Thaddeus, sorry, Thaddeus.
Well, James and Thaddeus.
James and Thaddeus, I'm sorry, that's right. James and Thaddeus. Well, they're disciples of the Lord. So they're, they're disciples who, somehow they must know who Mary is, that she knew they were coming and prepared for them. But, um, she didn't know that they knew who Jesus was until he walks in and he goes, she goes, oh, you know them, well, yes, they're my disciples, I hope they behave. They were, of course, they have, you know, so then they sit down. And then we see, I mean, it's a wonderful example of how the Lord has come to, to break open the presence of God. So Mary, of course, who hasn't observed Shabbat for years, you know, has her little paper that she's reading by the candlelight, and then she looks, she goes, huh, you're the rabbi, you lead. No, 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 he says, it's your house, I, I would love that you would lead instead. So here's, I mean, imagine, see, the contrast of it is profound when you think about it. Here is, um, the, the Pharisee from Jerusalem who has come to this little outpost of Capernaum, who's surrounded by all these religious people who are, you know, oohing and aahing at his presence, and he makes them whole, and all the fancy stuff of that Shabbat dinner, which really is just a liturgical exercise or ritual, versus Mary's Shabbat, which is very humble. It's, you know, she's worked all afternoon, she's got these, some people who has never been invited. You've never been, well, I've had to Shabbat, I've just never been invited, um, with these disciples, and she has the Messiah at her Shabbat, and doesn't even necessarily know that, although she knows he's a, he's truly the, the presence of, of God in a wonderful way. And then of course it brings us to the other Shabbat, the fourth one is Simon at his house. And as they sit around the table, he gets up, kisses his wife, you can tell, she is not happy. And he goes out, of course, his Shabbat is actually, he's breaking Shabbat, he's gone to betray his own people. And he's standing on the shore because nobody's fishing and the roost is up. And of course then, up come the Romans, and then. And then of course, as we will pick it up next week, what happens to Simon, and with Simon, Andrew, and the rest of them, um, along the way. They thought I was texting over there, I'm taking notes during the video, so that I make sure I cover all my points with you as we go through this.
I love how you connect with the chair that Mary pulled out by mistake. I love how you connect with the chair that Mary pulled up on the stage. You, you noticed that and pointed that out. That's pretty awesome.
Oh, for Elijah. Yes, yeah. And they sit there.
Like, "Oh, my gosh, he's finding these things and it's so amazing."
Well, that's, see, that's the, the intricacy in the way that they're writing this.
Only you pick it up.
Well, they work it out in its own way. Any other questions? Any questions at home? Or comments?
When the Romans came at the end there.
We got four people on.
And the Romans came at the end there.
Right. Quintus is sent there. Because it's the Shabbat and Simon has not come true on his promise.
No, I know that.
So now they're coming to collect.
I was looking at the light, like those people. The light, there was a light in the background.
Oh, in the background. That's the moon. I think that was the moon. I thought it was the moon. Well, because he's at Mary's house at dinner. Of course, it can be two places. I'll have to go back and look at that. All right. Yes.
Last week you mentioned something about tickets for the movie, that's the chosen series, the Christmas special. Do you have an idea how to acquire those tickets?
The Duke of Carver there.
You can have a car, Bellingham, Bellingham has extended, they, they originally released it for December 1st and 2nd, but they got overwhelmed by the response. And so Dallas put out a, a notice that in many of the theaters, they had extended it to the 10th. So I think if you can't, have trouble online, call Bellingham. I know they're going to the 10th. Solomon Pond, when I looked online, they only had two dates, the first and second. And I don't, Bellingham is very, very small because it, excuse me, it's their cafe theater. So you have to sit at the table and order food. And they were, they were almost sold out when I looked at them last Tuesday. So your, your best bet is probably to call Bellingham.
I did. And then all they did, they used the Roman call and.
They also have a third.
Solomon Pond?
Solomon Pond. Yeah, and the fourth. I'm sure it's.
They've, they've gone to the third, then they probably, they're going, I think it's the 10th that they released. I mean, they don't really care what movie they show. They just wanna make money. So if people are willing to buy tickets, then they're gonna be able to do it.
What movie is that?
Lisa.
That's on, on Zoom. She asked what movie. Oh, we're talking about, the, the, last week Dallas had a Zoom chat in which she explained that they've, they've done a Christmas special, which is an hour and a half. And they've got a lot of contemporary Christian rock artists who are doing familiar Christmas songs in their own particular genre. But in it is, I think it's a fifteen or twenty minute short. That is, from the way the trailer looks, it's Luke's version of the, the Christmas accounts.
I think they saw some of the beautiful way that Mary and Joseph, which they did.
Right. So, but I think it's, because there's at one point where Mary says, "Oh, tell Luke, I forgot to tell him this." This is an important detail. So I think it's telling the story of the visit of Gabriel, the visit to Elizabeth, some of the elements of the birth and then, because they've done the shepherd thing. So they may be doing some of the other pieces of Luke's narratives around Christmas. So and they've said it's part of the series. It's part, it's not part of the, what they've planned out. But it's part of, it's part of the overall vision of what they're looking to do. It's just not gonna be part of these seven seasons. It's a, it's a separate episode.
It's a prequel.
Right, yeah. Right. That's where you go.
You love the music of the whole, every episode, the music is so wonderful.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next week. Thank you.